A lot of what, so I'm carrying on.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Almost at max. Call the order, Town Council Stevensville. Don't take it too easy, man. I come down with a bug today and I feel pretty shitty. So.
I'll get you with the best that can. Call the order, Stevensville Town Council meeting agenda for Thursday, October tenth, two thousand and four. Do you have what you'd like to take the vote call?
Councilor Barker, here. Councilor Brown, here. Councilor Nelson, here. Councilor Respect, here. Mayor Mickelson.
Here. Could you please all dance for the pleasure of the evening? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Under public comments, please. Item number three, any public comments from citizens on anything not on the agenda, not on the agenda, please. Anybody have any public comments not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Town Council meeting minutes of nine twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. May I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Barker?
I make a motion for approval of Town Council meeting minutes from nine twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-four.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker. We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a discussion on the Town Council meeting minutes of nine twenty-six of twenty-four? Any corrections or additions on the minutes from the nine twenty-six? From the council? Have any comments from the public on the nine twenty-six? Seeing none, you know, would you please say the vote?
Councilor Barker, aye. Councilor Brown, aye. Councilor Nelson, aye. And Councilor Respect, aye.
Motion passes four to zero, thank you. Item number five, approval of the buyer's claims. May I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Smith?
I move that we approve claims number one nine two five three through one nine two eight eight.
One nine two eight nine. The, yeah. Yeah, my, my memory looks at that was the nine.
What's the addition?
The addition.
Eight nine.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, we have a second. Councilmember Barker?
A second motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, a second by Councilmember Barker on the claims. Do we have any discussion from the council on the claims? Councilmember Barker?
So the public is aware of what claim we added to that was the one nine two eight nine. Gina, could you please elaborate on that?
Uh, the one that I just added?
Yes, ma'am.
It's our liability annual assessment that we take MMIA every year. And each year, since I started last year, it was like around ninety-eight thousand dollars. And it is down to ninety, or seventy-nine thousand this year, which is good. And that's based off of our quarterly reports.
And that was one that was just missed from that claim? What was put on there?
It was, we, I had given her the, the claims first and realized, oh my gosh, I forgot because when we were working, we had to talk to you about it. And it was at five o'clock, I already submitted that. So they just would use it and give me a quick package.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Um, claim number one nine two seven oh. Overstreet Law Group, under nine, nine three oh two four. The Berta Farms. Uh, is the thirty-one oh two just paid to the law group for consulting fees, or?
Yes, um, what happened is, is recently here when we tried to go on Berta Farms to do cleanup. If we bought this. In fact, we regrouped and then Thomas O'Ward from Berta Farms filed a motion with the judge saying it's all cleaned up, it's all over. Stevensville wasn't going to be there, so then Greg countered that with a motion that's in there now saying, no, uh, even close. So that's where we're at there anymore. Back and forth a couple times, but that's what gets them on this.
Okay, yeah.
That's amazing.
Councilmember Barker?
Um, trying to figure out, this is under the visa claims of not, one nine two seven three. Um, Delta Hotels Resorts Reservations. There's no amount on that. What is that? Like, I see a CC Spectrum Administration right next to it.
So whether it's.
Or fifty-one ninety-nine?
Two seven three?
It's under the credit card, I'm assuming credit card claims from walking out, right? Um, if you scroll down, past for Valley Electric Co-op. About halfway down, there's a Century Wing and the Delta.
So the Delta is for Cody, I understand, who, um, is overtaking his class.
Okay.
He plays water class. Um, I know it's on the script.
I just don't see a dollar amount or anything with it.
Is it on page four?
Sorry. Um, yes, four is eleven.
Yeah, it's.
It has all your spectrum, but right above the spectrum is one.
No, it's the cancellation. No, this is the cancellation, the Delta hotels, that said negative six twenty-four thirty-one. That was the credit that we received back from Collette's. Um, Collette.
Okay.
Conference, thank you.
Since you, since you.
It just, it's, it's off a little bit, so that's why I was, I see cancels.
It's kind of weird, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Um, under claim one nine two seven oh, um, nine thirty, you researched from Overstreet Law, three forty-six fifty. Do we have an explanation on that, or is it everything together?
What page is this?
Uh, page, well, page twenty-one, it's.
Is it seven oh?
That was the same one that, um, that we're talking about Overstreet, Overstreet's claim. Um, that is just what he had put on there, um, the research. Um, I think Bob would have talked about that.
Yeah, that would just, uh, work that he did for you and I.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Um, claim number one nine two seven one and seven two for our Spring Street and Yellow Road projects. Are we, where are we on those two projects?
Um, I can either tell you right now, or I can tell you in my executive report.
We can wait, that's right.
That most of the executive report is about that.
Yeah, okay.
That looks for you.
That will work for me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council on the claims? Seeing none, any comments from the public on the claims? Mr. Motley?
I'll get back up to it now. Um, Raveli County Electric Co-op Fire Department for forty-three twenty, um, claim, uh, I think it's one nine two seven three?
Did you say seven three?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. So the question I have on that, that must be for cost share of the electric at the S R building? Forty-three dollars and twenty cents? It's right above the cancellation from Delta Hotels.
So the Valley County Co-op, yeah, that's part of the, um, at the airport.
That's our cost share of that, of the S R building. That's split out with the airport, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that was for a month period time?
It's a month.
Forty-three bucks? You know, you're running the lights out much up there. It seems like a lot, especially if it's a cost share.
We can carry on looking at that, Jeff.
Yeah, it does seem like a lot, not a damn deal.
But you're right.
To be split.
So Robert and I had talked about that several times, and he had come up with a split on that, so I can ask him about it.
It's to be good.
Any other questions from the public on the claims? None of them from the council, seeing none, you know, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Brown, aye. Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
And Councilor Nelson?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero, thank you all. Item number six, administrative reports. Airport, Mr. Bryan, your man, you're up to that.
That is, we go up to the.
Yeah, you're up to the board, sir, please. Just give your report to the council.
All right. Evening, everyone. Uh, let's see, starting with the courtesy car. Uh, groups of volunteers have gotten together, we've made quite a bit of progress, uh, equipment's been removed, some maintenance has been done to the car. Uh, the old police graphics have been mostly removed, uh, Alpha Graphics of Missoula is going to go ahead and, uh, agreed to sponsor the car, they're going to be putting new graphics on it for free. And then the SAF, uh, was generous enough to be working on it yesterday on their time, uh, getting it all cleaned up and ready to go. So we should have that car ready here in the next couple of weeks and available to the public. Uh, maintenance, uh, some lights and a handful of burned-out lamps have been replaced recently. Uh, working on getting snowplow trainings set up. Uh, CIP projects, working through a list of projects between asphalt maintenance, potentially a fuel tank, uh, so working on taking advantage of the FAA's, uh, ninety-five percent matching for fiscal year twenty twenty-sixth, uh, so those funds actually become available July first of twenty-five. So that's what we're working on right now. As I mentioned, the fuel, uh, working through, trying to solve the, uh, the current, uh, lack of fuel, kind of, it's the short-term thing, working with Hawthorne to try to come up with a solution there. But then also working to get our own fuel tank that will actually produce revenue for the town, for the airport. So that's, you know, that's a more of a complex funding issue with the FAA, but, uh, kind of the short and long-term plan there. Uh, the airport, uh, board, uh, we're working on filling the vacancies that we have on the board right now, so we've got a couple vacancies, we're going to get those, get some new people, uh, in, got some interest from, looks like some good people out there. Uh, and then last week, a week ago today, the airport board held a special board meeting, uh, to review the RFQ responses for the Airport Engineer Services contract that needs to be renewed so that we can continue to, uh, submit for grant money and, uh, and keep that airport maintained. So, uh, they reviewed, made a recommendation that will be brought up later in the meeting. Uh, so, want to thank the board for making that happen so quickly, and I want to thank Janelle. I came to her a month ago, trying to figure out how we can get this RFQ process done in a very short period of time, and she was just amazing to help us get this thing, you know, put together, get it published, get the responses in, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions to Ryan from the council?
Yes. Will you be putting together a report, uh, of alley, the fire season and all of the landings and all of that as?
For sure, yes, I can. I can do that, have it for the next, uh, council meeting.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
You bet.
Okay, I need to leave for the finance. Jeff, Fire Department, sir?
Fire Department, okay, so you have in your packet the report on, so for September, we ran fifty-three requests for service, we had twenty-one in the town, thirty-one within the district, one mutual aid. Um, you have forty of those were medical responses, twelve fire calls, um, which is kind of a high number for a month for fire calls, and one motor vehicle crash for the total of fifty-three. Um, at the end of September, we're at five hundred and eleven, so we're pretty much on track to hit that just below seven hundred, maybe we've been running. Um, so far here to date, we're at our end of September, we're at three oh eight in the district and one hundred and eighty-five in the town. Eighteen mutual aids, which is a little slight uptick. Um, out of our responses, we have three hundred and seventy-six were medical and a hundred and sixteen fires. So we have a pretty good fire season so far. Not, you know, that's, uh, all wildland and structure combined, um, which is a pretty good uptick, uptick, the entire call site, sort of, for whatever reason. Um, I think some of that may have had to do with the different wind events that we had with branches and things and power lines that got covered in and then through dispatch of fire because it's sparking with the branch and the wires, you know, they do that. Um, so that might be some of that, but yeah, so we're at five hundred and eleven calls at the end of September. I think the other day I just did five hundred and fifty-three run numbers. Um, so we'll have another fifty or so calls in, in a month, so. That's what it'll be. Um, we are getting ready to produce the annual fundraising letter that will be mailed out to all the district residents and town individuals, so if there are questions about this fire department looking for funds and all that, it is legitimate, that is something the associations are doing, so that's a legitimate thing, and we do it every year and have for the last twenty-three years. Sorry. Just in case somebody questions about that, that's a legitimate request that we have going on. On October, it's Fire Prevention Month. Um, I don't know that we're going to get into school to do anything, and we don't have much, we don't have any funding for that, but we're seeing if we can get the, our district, the, uh, associations to pick up the tab on, on the fire prevention program. Um, so other than that, that's what we're at today.
Any questions with the fire chief? Councilmember Barker?
I see one missed call on there. What was the reason for that, Jeff?
I don't know, I don't know what that missed call was. We had zero missed calls in the month of September, so it must have been the previous month where nobody responded to any questions. We're going to get into it, but I don't know what it was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the council to the fire chief? And Jeff?
Thanks, Jeff.
They're busy. Okay. Move on to the police report. Uh, Chief John, he, I had the academy, wanted him, invited him down to give two days of tactical training and firearm safety for the academy for the cadets. It puts our name out there, so they're paying all the expenses, so John went and gave that for two days, so he asked me to give the report. Uh, September, we had one arrest, five citations, seven mornings, zero warrants served, zero robberies, zero homicides, zero undetected deaths, one assault, zero sex crimes, one theft, zero burglaries, two criminal mischief, three frauds, one suspicious activity, two traffic accidents, zero privacy and communication, one intimidation, fifty-six calls for service, two lost properties, and of course, my favorite, since I've turned it over, we've towed six vehicles in the month of September. That's good. One welfare check, nine traffic stops, one disturbance, and one victim notified. So I had a meeting two days ago, went to the school with the superintendent, and he's very impressed with our SRO, pretty happy with the contract we signed. He's very happy with Frankie, he's up there, Mr. Franklin, officer. He loves John, of course, everybody likes John, but anyway, he's very happy with what we're doing for the SRO affairs, the presence up there, as far as the, uh, the traffic control up there, it was a little out of hand for a while with the kids speeding, but they're up there, Mr. Franklin and John on the other side over by, uh, Jill Cooks, they'll be able to put that in place, so. I'd like to say that we're pretty happy as far as the school district goes, as far as law enforcement, and once we get, Kenny's got four weeks, Chris has got four weeks to go, and he'll be back, he'll be certified, so then we'll have a full force. So right now, we're a little shorthanded, so we'll have to bear with us. So, that's our police report. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Public works. Anything Steve had, or just a?
Yeah. So the fall cleanup is going on now, but we're seeing that sometimes people are confused between the fall cleanup and the regular storm damage removal. Is that the meeting our executive report to about storm damage, the meeting that we went to about storm damage?
Yes, I'll.
So, in case you get questions from people in the ward, no, we didn't forget that pile there, but that's a different category. So we're going to come back and get them, and we also do know that all the leaves haven't fallen yet. Do have to deal with it, and we've done what we could this week. Glenn Bees retired, Cody has been in class all week, so it's only been three of us. So we've done what we could, we'll continue to do it. Nobody freak out, we'll be back. So, but if your, if your leaves are not back, and if it is yard debris and not storm debris, four feet long above, or it's going to stay right there, because we just, we can't do it long. You're going to get questions about that, thinking that we forgot our belongings. We did, trust me, I know it's there.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. That ends our administrative reports, we'll move on to item number seven, new business. Item A, discussion decision, consent to the mayor's appointment of Heidi Motley to the park. Can I entertain a motion? Councilmember Brown?
I move that we appoint Heidi Motley to the park.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown, we have a second. Councilmember Nelson?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Nelson, do we have a discussion from the council on the appointment of Heidi Motley to the park? Any comments from the public? Vicki?
No, no, she would have been here, but she hadn't known this was on the agenda.
Okay. Seeing none from the public, Janelle, would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero, thank you all. Item number B, discussion decision, resolution number five fifty-five, a resolution of the town of Stevensville, Montana for emergency tax levies for the thunderstorm wind event two thousand and twenty-four. So as you know, uh, earlier this fall, we had that big storm, and a twenty-third week later, we declared an emergency, a disaster. Uh, we had put these two mill levies on the agenda, but we took them off because, uh, irrecoverable disaster climate, God, they told us not to do it, and we're quite ready. So we held off on it. Two weeks ago, Steve, I, Gina went to the disaster meeting with the state and Hamilton, and all three of us, and we were told that we have to put this on here first, it has to go through, we have to spend the, uh, it's a mill levy, it's two mills, it's a one-time deal, and it comes down to seventy-one hundred dollars. So it comes down to like seven hundred and seven, seven dollars and seventy-two cents, and everybody's tax good next time. And that has to go with the disaster cleanup that we had earlier with the debris and everything. And once we exhaust that, which we probably already have, um, then we move on to the disaster part, right, Gina?
Where?
We've hired an arborist to come in, same arborist that's doing the city of Hamilton's trees right now, they'll come through, they'll look at every tree location, they'll map it, they'll let us know which ones that need to be either pruned or taken down because of damage. So that's what's going on there, but we have to pass this first before we can get to the second part, which is a disaster. And that disaster entails a lot, a lot of documentation, a ton of documentation. Right down, we have to take pictures of the debris pile, we have to take pictures of machinery that we're using. It all has to be related to FEMA. They use it, it's the guidelines of the federal government as far as FEMA. I don't know how they equate it, right, Steve, but they have some equation that they use that we, you know, we get reimbursed for not only wages, but gas and fuel and tires and, I don't know, all that stuff. But anyway, it's a lot of work, a lot of documentation, and, but it's a good way to get a lot of our trees pruned and a lot of them cut down, because we don't have the money within our budget to do that. And we, we reached out for help, and that's what this is for, so. I would encourage the council to please pass this part here, get it going. I know we all don't like taxes, but for seven dollars and ninety-something cents one-time deal, I think we could all live with that. With that, could I please entertain a motion? Councilmember Barker?
I make a motion to approve resolution five fifty-five, five, five hundred fifty, yeah, five fifty-five, a resolution, town of Stevensville, Montana for emergency tax levies for this thunderstorm wind event of twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barker, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
Oh, second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Brown, do we have any further opening discussion from the council regarding? Councilmember?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you just mentioned that we have to have pictures of the damage and debris pile. A lot of these debris piles are gone.
No, the main debris pile, the one that's down there, kind of.
Oh, I see, all right.
That's the one. I've already taken pictures, I walked the whole town and take pictures of all the trees that were there. And we're ready to set that up, in fact, Gina's ready to set that up when it's through the MMIA, and that's another thing. The disaster, um, told us that we have to file with MMIA first, and when I was at the meeting last week in West Yellowstone, Mark Ossier, they had, uh, liability specialists that, that, yes, send it to us, and if it's in the boulevard, we're probably going to deny it. That's what we do. But if it's in your parks or everything, and the trees get damaged, they'll probably cover that, but in the boulevards, for whatever reason, even though they're the town trees, they won't cover that, and that's kind of weird, but, but this other one will, this state one will, I mean, the G and D one will, they'll cover that, you know, so, that's what all the pictures are, we have to take. Councilmember?
Uh, so the seventy-one hundred and sixty-two dollars was, uh, two million emergency levy? So that was the original. That was the previous levy?
No, this, this would be a new levy that would be put on next tax.
And this is what we'd be trying to raise?
Yes, that's, that's what the tax, tax will maybe is, it's all estimated by East Town and State right there. Town of Stevensville is seven thousand one hundred and sixty-two.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And Raveli County is Hamilton declared a disaster too, and there's those twenty-three thousand dollars, sorry, yeah, twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. And they've already passed their levy. They're kind of like one half step ahead of us, which is good, because we're kind of following behind and using their, using their, uh, the way they did it, so that works pretty good. Councilmember Barker?
So, we're, we're approving the mill levy on this, doesn't this have to go in front of a public hearing for this?
No, no. Councilmember?
Um, is this like, um, some of the other disasters that I've been hearing on the radio that, um, then the, um, general public, if they've had, um, problems at their homes and stuff, that then they can get money too?
No.
Not this one?
Yeah.
Not this one?
Still true.
I guess that was one of the first questions we asked, can the public be, can the public do this as well, at least at town? So unfortunately, we.
But the declaration of there being an emergency does help with your personal insurance.
That helps. We were, we were told that that meaning that this did not cover personal property. That's the homeowner, whatever, like the tree insurance that fell on his car, the claim of MMIA that got denied, basically. He'd have to turn it into his insurance.
Did you say that was denied?
Yes. MMIA denied that one. Councilmember Nelson?
Um, does this cover damage to our parks and recreational areas?
Yes, the seven thousand dollars, we could use that for whatever. Yes, the $7,000, we could use that for whatever we want to use it for. Whether it's for wages, debris pickup, damages for our parks or whatever, trees, pavilions. But we thought probably, we haven't got that far yet until it's passed. This is probably hard to eat nut from the first storm, just the picking up debris and everything, wages. And once we get to the state disaster one, that's where we can start using for our pavilions that were damaged and everything. And that way we can, and the pencils that were damaged over the cemetery, the trees on the boulevard, and all that. So that will pick up all the injuries.
Was my understanding you correct that if this does not pass, they will not help us with the state?
Correct. If this doesn't pass, then we're off completely. We just move on. We just eat everything.
And what's, what's this gonna raise our taxes to again?
$7.79 or something for housing. You take 7,100 and then you divide it by very different.
But that's also divided by the value of the home?
Well.
So, you know, up and down type of thing, yeah.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the public on the two-mill levy on the disaster?
What does MMIA stand for? Montana Municipal Interlevel Authorities.
In fact, I just got re-elected to the Board of Governors for, Board of Directors for two more years.
It's Montana Municipal Interlevel Authorities.
They're a property liability company that covers the town of Montana's municipality and towns. Okay, any other comments from the public? And from the council, seeing none, do you know what, please take your vote?
Councilwoman Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barker?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to item number C. Discussion decision, resolution number 557, a resolution of the town of Stevieville, Montana to establish irrigation and sprinkling days and times. So we thought we would strengthen this up a little bit since in my walking all over summer and everything, I noticed quite a few people that are using the sprinkling system. They water when they shouldn't be. It isn't really bad, but it's bad enough that we think we should put this in there. So we put this ordinance, or this resolution in there to strengthen it, to give the FEMA addresses, law addresses, watering, hose watering, no watering, and also that irrigation and sprinkling days and times. We said, if a person finally began violating any provision of the days and times, man incur a penalty as stated in ordinance number 133, section 304. So basically, if you're caught watering and we talked to Chief John about this, and he is willing to enforce this next spring and summer, then we'll come before the court. He'll be fine for watering when he shouldn't be. Because the amount of money and everything that we're paying for water now, we just can't give it away. That's what this is about. So with that, could I entertain a motion, please? Councilmember Barker?
I make a motion for approval of resolution 557, a resolution of the town of Stevieville, Montana to establish irrigation and sprinkling days and times.
We have a motion by councilmember Barker. Do we have a second? Councilmember Smith, I have a second. We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Smith. Do we have a discussion from the council on the water? Councilmember Smith?
No. We are looking at this resolution 557, but we already have something on the books. Is that correct?
Yes, just to strengthen this.
That's alright. I remember seeing those times on my water bill and all that.
Right. But it was a very good initiative. On this, on this resolution, if we need to change the times or the days or whatever reasons, just pull this resolution out and see if you can figure out, take care of it.
Okay.
Any other comments from the council on the water? Any comments from the public on the item on the water? Yes, sir.
Does this change what's present for days of watering and even not?
No, sir.
And the times, it just adds a penalty if you do?
Yes. Doesn't change the days. And we do change the days, just like I said, we bring the resolution back. Instead of bringing the whole and it's like.
Then the penalty's always been there.
Yes, the penalty's always been there.
Within the ordinance, the penalty shows there. So you just add that to the bottom of that resolution?
Yep.
I was under the impression that the water times were seasonal. Is that not the case?
What's that?
The, I'm coming.
Yes, come up for me.
Okay. Well, listen, I went on college weeks. I wanted to clarify that the water times were seasonal, I thought, on the water bill. That it was just a summertime water restriction?
Well, not me. Well, if you're watering in winter, I don't think you would be, but.
But I could if I wanted to, right?
Well, yeah.
But, so I just want to clarify that that's still, I mean, it's not written in here that there's a, like a summertime and wintertime watering. So I just wanted to clarify that if I decided to water at 2:00 PM on Sunday, November, you know, January 2nd, I would be penalized for that watering.
Yeah.
On a Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah, watering on Sunday, right. So then I'm just clarifying that that's not written in here, or I guess maybe in the water bill, it said.
If it's not seasonal, it's not seasonal.
Okay, so then we're getting rid of the seasons. That is the change, correct. And would you guys consider extending the water hours or days? Like 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM? Instead of just doing, I think it's like 7 to 10? How do you guys spell about 6:00 PM? Or maybe allowing watering on Sundays? I'm, you know, I have kind of a tighter schedule and I don't have a ton of time to be here on, I live on an odd address, so I have to be here Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays. I work in Missoula, so I can't order in the mornings. So I'm gonna have to be doing it in the evenings, and it would be nice to have an extra hour. And I think it'd only help the town by generating revenue that I build from watering. I'm big on green lawn in the summertime.
No problem. We can change the hours. If you can bring an agenda, I am for that effect. We can before the council, we can change the hour. We just can't change it right now.
Okay. I thought on the watering bills, it did say 6:00, and this is saying 7:00. I'm taking this from the one scheduled with this posted for the county. I can double check. But I wanted to say that one of them that I had on a little card specified 6:00, not 7:00. I can, so I think, yeah, I can give you a little bit of that because I think it was 6:00. Because if that's the fact, I'm guilty. Yeah, I mean, I was, I, that extra hour, I mean, I've been doing 7:00, but then like, I'm like, okay, 7:00. And, you know, right out of the jeopardy, I'm running out there. And then I have to go to bed at 9:00, like right on the job. It's only a two-hour, I never got a decent-sized yard, so I'm struggling. And I definitely tend to keep my lawn green next summer. So I can bring that forward, is that just a document? That I can get online for a genuine item, or how do we do that? Okay. I'm gonna sign in and then I'll get out of the way. But there's no reason why we can't change that.
We can amend.
I guess you could, right, you know?
That's, we should have that option to be able to do.
Do you want to amend it?
Because this is just a, just a resolution. So your assigned watering days do state 7:00 AM to noon on hose watering, 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM hose watering. Automatic sprinkler systems are 12:01 AM to 6:00 AM. There is no watering between noon and 7:00 PM. Well, my motion, I admit it.
So the council wants to change that, that, take the time, or do you want to amend it? Change that time to the resolution, or you want?
What are we changing it to?
To.
From 7:00 to 6:00? Oh, 6:00 PM, 10:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM? Okay. I mean, yeah. I don't think it's that big of a change.
A motion to do that, huh? Councilmember Nelson?
I make a motion that on resolution 557, we amend the watering time, hose watering for the odd days?
No.
For all of them? Okay, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM to?
It needs to be for changing the time on 7:00 AM to noon and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Because automatic sprinkler systems has their own time period.
So amend the time from 7:00 AM to noon and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM?
On the hose water?
On hose watering.
We have a motion to change the hose watering from 7:00 AM to noon and 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We have a motion by councilmember, we have a second. We have a second by councilmember Smith. Do we have a discussion from the council? Discussion from the public? Okay, this is on changing the amended motion only on changing the watering hours, okay? Gina, would you please take your votes?
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Barker?
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 1. Thank you, that's on the amended motion. Now it's go back to the original. Resolution on, it's 133. Any more discussion on the council before we take the vote? None? Any discussion from the public?
Not question clarification, so I can hose water in the morning and sprinkle water after 12:00 AM? Right, on my given day? So I can actually water basically most of all day and most of all night?
You can read them exactly.
If I sort of choose. So really not cutting down on all the usage.
Yeah.
If somebody wanted to do direct.
They just people who water, Martin, Mike, and Cal.
Yeah.
Isn't that a thing of even the odd numbers as well?
It does.
That does say just for automated watering systems, the 12:01 AM to 6:00 AM? The automated systems?
Councilmember Brown?
But do we still have more people? I think it's the elderly people who have the automated sprinkler systems. They can get a variance on this to water. And people who work swing shifts or something like that to we, I think at one time there was something.
I personally haven't seen those ones come through, but the ones that I have seen come through is when a new build is putting in a lawn. Then they just, they talk with Stephen and Adriana, and then they set that schedule to be watering outside those because they're trying to establish a lawn or if you saw it going down. But I've not seen the other, please, have you, Stephen?
No.
At one time we did, where people, people say the elderly people, I hear our sprinkler system turning on at midnight. Yes, it does wake me up. I've gotten used to it, but I think we did at one time for special needs, we have giving them a variance to water at a different block of time if needed.
I just went through the ordinance right here, Cindy, and I don't see anything that's in there that just varies.
I know the logs are that way. And they went through to city council or city hall to get variance.
I'll look back on some resolutions just to make sure we didn't, the city, but we were really scouting through to make sure that there wasn't one like this that was already set. So I can, I can go back through and do a little more research on that for you.
Because I thought at one time there was, but it's been a few years.
No, but you can look into that, Cindy.
Thank you.
If it does, we can bring it back and we can amend this ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
To show a brief like that. A vote for you?
Yes, that way.
Any other comments from the council? From the public? Gina, would you please take your vote?
Councilwoman Brown?
I'm going to see now until we can get the right correct wording.
But if we can't find it, then we have to create one.
Create one.
Okay, good enough. Keep going? Yeah. Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Barker?
No.
I don't break the time on this one, so we'll look into it. We'll bring back the various questions that we can.
So resolution 557 has been, has failed?
Yes, has failed. True to truth. Okay. We'll move on to item number E, discussion decision. The Stevieville Airport Board recommends that Morrison Marley Aviation Engineering Services. So with the blessing of the council, could I have Mr. Jermaine come up and contribute?
Okay, so you skipped something. You skipped item D.
D?
D.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Rescind the resolution?
Yep. Yep. Excuse me. Discussion decision, rescind resolution number 321, a resolution of the town of Stevieville adopting a budgeting billing as a billing option for water and sewer utilities. We're just using, rescinding up and cleaning up some old ordinances and resolutions. This came before, back when MIMAC was here in 2013, they started budget billing. And as you know, we no longer do any of that, so we're just cleaning it up. Councilmember Smith?
I move to rescind resolution number 321 and resolution of the town of Stevieville adopting budget billing as a billing option for water and sewer utilities.
I have a motion by councilmember Smith, we have a second. Councilmember Nelson?
My second.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Nelson. Do we have a discussion on rescinding resolution 321?
Yes, sir.
Question, does this have anything to do with the billing help for water and sewer? No, no, that could, alright, no, thank you.
Any further comments from the council? Councilmember Barker?
I actually did a little bit of research on what those resolutions were associated with them and how they were worded and stuff. Obviously, it was something to help the citizens. I don't know how that would affect now, obviously with our new rates that have gone in. It was quite in detail from, obviously, it's old rates for one. I don't know if that is something that we can look at with the new rates, what those would be. Maybe come back and revisit this, because I, like anything, everybody's looking for something to be able to help out in a reduced rate. We have our electrical that is, you know, a budget billing. Especially with the winter months, us getting rid of the Help for You program that I am trying to find out more information on, to see if we can get, you know, something geared in the correct way. Obviously, there was a, there was a reason for it, to do away with it, to rescind it. Are we just, are we just cleaning up what is there and are we?
We have a huge budget billing for a lot of years.
I didn't even know it was available until I actually went onto the website, and it was listed on our website as budget billing. And so, you know, we have it. Why aren't we using that option? No one's ever. But if I see, I've inquired, but no one's currently using it.
You guys took it away. You took it away when they switched and did something. And so then it was like you can't do budget billing anymore. So it wasn't, it, I don't believe it ever came to council. Sorry, I should stand up. And I guess I should wait till you.
No, go ahead.
I used it all the time. It was wonderful. I knew what I was gonna pay every month. I knew what I was going to pay every month. Then I could, I could budget my bills. We have a rental house. I did it on that property also. I mean, I paid the water and sewer. But it was just nice to know, okay, what are our expenses? How much, you know, if I have to change the rental costs, you know, what do I need to do to make it equitable? Because we keep the grass green in the summer. But it was wonderful. And then I don't know at what point, I mean, it just went away and I inquired and they said, we can't do that anymore. So it's been a while. But I, I used it. I, I liked it. It was a nice way to be able to figure out monthly expenses.
It does, it does state Black Mountain in here, a lot of it. But I guess my question is, and it was brought back, it was in 2010 when this was actually all put together. And that was on one, that was on one of the resolutions anyway.
2013.
Correct.
It was assigned.
So I guess, you know, and it actually had what we have for gallons of water right now, the water usage. It shows the 3,000 gallon of water. So, and then obviously the bigger lines was more water. So, I don't know, I think it's something that maybe it needs to be revisited a little bit.
You guys can do whatever you want. If you want to table it, have us look into more into it.
We can look into it. I would say why not? I mean, I just think that nobody's ever really approached, you know, approached.
We're just trying to clean some of this stuff up.
But I didn't, I didn't even know it was there until I was looking for the Help For You program information and I actually came across it. And I don't even remember how I came across it, but I think, I think maybe it said something of budget billing and the Help For You or something like that. And I actually looked at it. And so that's where I was, had made at the last meeting comment that maybe this was something that Mrs. Walters could benefit from, which was Sarah Springer speaking on behalf of her mom. So...
It's something that I didn't know it was an option. It's helping, not too long ago. So, yeah, we can definitely look into that.
I mean, when, when we did it, when it was offered, I mean, I paid, I want to say I paid $100 a month. And then through the winter, I mean, I still paid that amount. And I went into the spring and summer with a credit. So then that helped offset the watering in the summer. And so it just made it nice because, yeah, I know this is what I'm going to pay. And then by summertime, then my bills weren't like this. Might help keep things greener.
The other piece that it does is it puts money into the town's coffers to pay a month in advance. And so you have other people's money to be working off of for a short period of time. So it helps that way also. If you have people participating in it, obviously.
Right.
That's the key. But I mean, for those 2, 3, 500 that do, yeah.
What other councils wishes you'd like to pursue in further table it and have us look into it? You know, we need to pursue whether the computer programs we're using can facilitate this.
Well, that's what they're going to investigate. They'll table it. Councilmember Brown?
I, I move that we table this agenda item until further information is brought to the council.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second to table this until we can get more information to see if it is feasible and also if we can put it into our Black Mountain software system. But obviously, that's changed.
Right, and it does obviously say, state in there that there is the Black Mountain software, I believe. But again, that software has changed over time, so...
I believe I read the same thing. Okay, we can look into it and then bring it back under unfinished business. Councilmember Green, take a vote. Jeanette?
Table. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes orders that are able to table this and bring it back under unfinished business. Thank you.
You still have an original motion at first.
Would you table it, take that? Would you take care of that?
Yeah, we table it.
We'll table it. I just want to make sure we're...
Yep, yep.
On, on the budget billing, the way it was set up is kind of like a power bill. You have to have had service. You personally had to have service with the town, I think, for a year before you could go into budget billing so that you knew what your water usage was and not what, like say, if you bought a house. And that's kind of what North of us energy is too. I mean, they, you have to have service for a year before they can go on that, so...
That might be a restriction of the software. So we'll ask.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Discussion decision, Stevensville Airport Board recommends Morrison Marley for Aviation Engineering Services. Councilmember Brown?
I move that we point Morrison Marley for Aviation Engineering Services.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Brown, we have a second. Councilmember Barker?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Barker on having Morrison Marley do the engineering services for the airport. With the council's permission, could I have Brian out and up and give his... Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Okay, so we, as you know, we've recently engaged in the RFQ process. Morrison Marley, well, it was, I guess the, the RFQ was published September 11th. Three weeks solicitation period ended October 2nd. We received one submission, that was again Morrison Marley. We have a long history with Morrison Marley at this airport. They have designed, managed nearly every project that the airport has done, both maintenance and development over the last 25 years. Been extremely successful at securing the funding for the airport. I mean, they have $5.3 million worth of work that they have helped us manage up there. Been a $292,000 cost to the town for about a 5%, match rate. And more recently, over the last five years, those numbers were $2.2 million projects with only $34,000 out of the pocket. So they've managed to actually get our match rate down to only 1.5%. So they've been very successful helping the airport and the town to, to get the absolute most from the FAA and the Department of Aeronautics to fund all these projects. They have outstanding relationships with, with those organizations. And then on Thursday, October 3rd, the airport board held a special board meeting to review and vote on, on, on these, on this response. The board collaborated and scored Morrison Marley stating the qualifications per the RFQ scoring criteria. And after voting through or scoring each of those nine criteria, they received a score of 100, 100 out of 100. And they voted unanimously approved to recommend them to the town council to negotiate a new five-year engineering services contracts. Right now, they're already under contract from the master planning contract, right? But this is the engineering service contract again for all of the development and maintenance projects that we have to do there.
Okay. Any questions from the council? To the airport, man. Regarding the Morrison Marley. Any comments from the public?
Would like to, would like to make this statement. I would like to personally thank councilman Brown who sat in for me at the board meeting. I was quite ill at the time and coming out of the hospital, so thank you and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Brian. No comments from the public? Craig, come on up to the podium, sir.
Great Thomas Airport Board Chair, I've worked as the airport board chair with Morrison Marley since 16. That's the reason, Morrison Marley is the reason we have excellent work on, on working. They have done beyond the scenes, beyond their contract, a lot of volunteer time. On weekends, evenings, emergencies that we had, various other things that were happening that we needed some consultation with them. Tyler has been exceptional. Sean earlier had been saying. And their rapport with the FAA is absolutely excellent. So I just want to say, I don't see how we could possibly do any better.
Thank you, Craig. Any other comments from the public? Jeanette Edwards, please take the vote.
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes 40. Thank you. Item number F, discussion decision, Stevensville Park Board suggesting Hillbilly Fencing LLC to repair and adding fencing at Father Revalley Park. It's on October 3rd. The park board held a meeting, they discussed the replacement, repair and adding of fencing at Father Revalley Park. Steve, the public board, he provided the park board with bits on the fencing company. They, they asked it out and they recommended that Hillbilly Fencing, which is the owner of our mom, do the work. Councilmember Nelson?
I move Stevensville Park Board's recommendation for the suggestion of using Hillbilly Fencing LLC to repair or add fencing to Father Revalley Park.
We have a motion by councilmember Nelson, we have a second. Councilmember Smith?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Smith. We have a discussion from the council on Hillbilly Fencing, so Father Revalley. Councilmember Brown?
Did we put this in the budget? I can't remember exactly if we had that in.
Councilmember Barker?
Actually, I think there was discussion that that was what they were going to use part of the Jane Thomas for, I believe. If that's what the park board, I don't know what they did especially else.
That's what I was appropriate to, yes.
But that was, but there's only, there's only 6,000 left in that, that, that fund.
We do have money in the park board that we can take out of it. But not park board, no. Oh, pardon me.
Yeah. We didn't have a tree fall on the fence or anything.
No. Sadly, no more trees over there, I wish there was. Councilmember Brown?
This is for Father Revalley Park?
Yes.
Yes. And the fence was taken, partially taken down for them to get clay equipment in there and it has never been put back up is the problem. And we have a lot of kids using that park for playing football, soccer, T-ball, practice.
We have just a quick question. I drove by there the other day and just kind of take, took notice as I was going by. Sprinkler systems, are those working properly in the park? No. Okay. Because I did notice there was a large spot that looks like it's pretty much going to dirt.
Yeah.
So, and maybe that's something to think about too. I don't know. I mean, I know it's one, one step at a time for it, but...
And then there was also talk, if you go around Missoula, a lot of their parks, or Hampton, they don't put fences up. I think their parks don't have fences for whatever reason. But, and I thought, what would happen if we took the fence down here and just left it down? But then, like Cindy said and Vicky said, there's soccer, there's balls that are rolling out, they're on the street, the kids chase them and if there's not a barrier there, they could go out on the street and boom.
And those, a lot of those parks that you're noticing in Missoula, obviously are bigger parks than what we have as well. This is, it is, it is a, heavily, my kids used it when they were little doing soccer.
Right.
We had things over there.
I'm just saying.
So I think it needs to continue to be that way just for the safety of the kids that are really, because I have seen people that do not do that on any of the streets in town. Second street's really that, uh, we have a speed limit, we have that sign that they're staying how fast and it's not being obeyed, so...
Councilmember Smith?
All right, I think we need to get it on the record too that we're moving that fence three feet in to facilitate better parking as well.
Councilmember Brown?
There was being moved in so they can get them over on the curbside to mow. That's...
But was it, I don't think it was three feet, was it?
Yeah. So this is what it is. It says we're moving it three feet west of the curbing location.
Any other comments from the council on Hillbilly Fencing? Any comments from the public?
I think that part of the reason we were moving it in towards the west was so that the city lawnmower could mow in that area without the homeowners in the area having to mow it themselves, to give them enough space to run the, the mowers down, so...
I do have a question for Steve on there. It says old posts will be removed and all the way including disposal fees. We got something we could...
They didn't want to use the existing program.
They didn't want to do it alone?
Yeah. They didn't want to piece it together and you are, we're with the old, you pull top rail with the, with clay. They don't want to put their name on it.
All right, that's fine. And if we're going to get sponsors to hang their placards on there, of course, we want to have a shiny fence, right?
That's right.
Okay. Any other comments from public? And from the council? Jeanette Edwards, please take the vote.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
And Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Motion passes 40. Thank you. Item number G, discussion decision, purchasing Union Ditch shares from Brad Coleman. So about March, Brad came in, approached Jeanette and I, saying that he had water rights shares that he wanted to sell to the town. He didn't want to, that's for many more, for whatever reason. He was supposed to retire. In fact, right now, he's down in New Mexico or something. Yeah, so we brought it up during the budget, we put it in the budget and as you can tell, it's $4,000 and I think it's $75 transfer fee. And it's something, I talked to Greg about it, he thought it was something that we definitely should, should have, their water rights, their shares. And they're used to irrigate Riverside Cemetery, so. Anytime it comes down to water rights for a price like this, I think we should jump on If it ever comes down to having water, the people with the water rights are going to get it.
You're going to have that budget, right?
Yep, it's in the budget. You can put it in. In fact, we were $4,500. With that, could I get a motion? Councilmember Nelson?
I move that we, the town of Stevensville purchased Union Ditch shares from Brad Coleman.
We have a motion by councilmember Nelson, we have a second. Councilmember Barker?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by councilmember Barker. We have a discussion from the council on the Union Ditch shares. Water rights shares on the ditch that gives us water to Riverside Cemetery. Councilmember Barker?
And so these shares are strictly good for irrigation purposes?
Yes. You have a question on that ditch. Union Ditch, they're called Union Ditch Water Rights Share.
So how many shares do we have right now? Do we know?
I don't know, that's a good question.
And I tried to reach out to them prior to finally getting ahold of Mr. Coleman because that took us a little bit. And I haven't heard back, but then there was some stuff online that showed, and I'm not going to, it's hard to tell if it was document made by Union Ditch or if someone was just putting numbers on the internet for them. And I thought that I saw that we had 32, but I'm not, I mean, that's, that's still out there and they still need to contact us back and kind of give us an, an answer on that, so... I'm not real positive on that.
Yeah, they're very individual. In the last news. So when that ditch goes down, it's probably a couple of weeks.
Or at the tail end.
Three weeks.
But, Councilor Brown, I will continue to find...
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah.
So in reality, if we find out that we have way too many Union Ditch water shares in it...
You never will have too many. You never will have too many water shares.
I was just saying, it can be a revenue, can't it?
Yeah, you know.
I wouldn't be able to... I don't know how that works, so.
I don't know if Rich Kearney is in charge of Union Ditch water or Supply Ditch water, but he might be able, is he Supply Ditch?
I think you're right, yeah.
But he can get you the right people.
You sure could. It's a great idea, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further comments from the council before we take the vote on Union Ditch shares, water rights? And from the public? And now would you please take the vote?
Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Last night of our night, discussion decision, donation of park benches for Lewis and Clark Park to his historic mission, and I won't get kind of exhausted, so Steve, go ahead and explain to them as you would.
Well, there's like 14, 15 benches down there, they're not listed in the park, they've just been sitting down in storage, in storage at the plant, and the only time they ever are used is for the sailors' bachelors. Used to be West of A's, and Creamery, and now is Creamery and Scarecrow. So the only time we ever touched them was to move them from the plant, even if they got, moved back to the plant, and then missing one again. Just went back and forth, and they volunteered to pay in on this year ahead of their pants again. And I miss, well, I think they were getting more use out of them, they're too light. If I put them in the park, what they are is collared ends, the two by fours rule, kind of old, they're too light for us to use, as there was yet, if I put them in Lewis and Clark, they'd be on the bottom, say, far below, and ten o'clock. Um, I thought about putting them on the trail, down by the river, they'd be in the river. They're, they're too light, and I can't think of a useful, for us, and I don't know what to do, and they're taking up space that I could put something else. So, you know, it would be nice, good for them.
So, obviously, certain things have gone away, Creamery, what, Creamery picnic, they just use them for, for garden party, those type of things.
Is that a move, is that?
That was, yes, and I don't know why that ever went away, but that was one of the events, and I keep remember there were several of them that were at one time along Main Street for where anybody could sit down and have a seat, and all of a sudden, those went away. I don't know when those went away. Obviously, like you said, they do need to be changed out and stuff, but I don't, I think just donating them and saying, you know, when they need them, yeah, it's great, but as far as just giving them to them, okay.
Councilmember Barker?
I need to abstain from this discussion on the benches with the historic Paul St. Mary's Mission, I'm on the board for the mission.
Good, thank you. And I think Steve, did you tell me that you asked them if they would be fine if we donated to them, and she said that would be great?
Yeah.
Was it him?
Doris.
Doris. And they donated a bike rack or something to us?
Yeah, it was a bike rack.
Kind of a trade kind of deal?
But that had been, yeah, probably, yeah.
Right. They have a...
There's more benches than our bike rack, if you want to keep some off, we've got a lot of management to do, that's okay, we can do that too.
We don't, in certain areas, it's, I guess it'd be up to the business.
I just didn't, I didn't know where they went, you know, and I'm... Some businesses, they had, some businesses called and asked them to be removed, they were putting other of their own things out in front, that was probably about three years ago, maybe, that a couple of businesses called and said that one of them just be picked up. No, they must have had a reasoning of their own, what they wanted to do in front of their business, but I do remember that.
One of mine is, and Steve said, the only time that, since he's been here, of course, for about three, four years, once a year, all kids pick those things up and haul them over to St. Mary's for their events, and then it was over, and they had time, they hauled it back. Went back and forth, it was used for nothing else, so when this thing came, this year, when it was sitting over there, and the bike rack deal came up, that's when the idea came up, well, you know, we're just hauling it over there to them anyway, we're not using it anywhere else, maybe we could just donate it to them. I guess if we needed it, they would let us, probably.
But that's the thing, I mean, will, will they let us borrow them back if that's, I mean, maybe there should be an agreement, you know? You guys are using them for now, keep them in storage over there, and if we, if the town needs it for something, maybe...
Well, I'm sure they would work that out. Maybe somebody on the board can make that.
Is, is there a motion on the service?
I guess, yeah. We'll start with a motion, okay?
Oh, all right.
Will you get a motion, please?
Sorry, I can yell that.
That's fine. Item H. Okay. Councilmember Smith?
I'm, moving park benches from the Lewis and Clark Park to the historic...
We have a second. We have a motion, we have a second by Councilmember Nelson, we have any further discussion from the council on the park. Councilmember Smith?
Now, once again, for, how many benches are we talking about, and what are they made of?
I wish I could count them, 15, probably 12 at least, and they are these polyplastic...
Plastic?
Yeah. Ends, with two by fours, connect, they might be removed, no, they're just on the end, with eight foot to go, four in between, in slots, so they run up these slots and then run to the back. Plastic's in good shape, it's faded.
But a lot like this plastic that we see any of these triggers and what have you, they're made out of plastic, so, we could, if we had these out on Main Street, and they break, we have a liability issue.
And, and all they do, where they are now, they sit in the sun, and in the snow, and...
Yeah.
You know, they're all faded out, they seem to be holding up, we don't break them when we move them, but they just become old, I guess, all the time. They probably got somewhere they can keep them.
Storage.
In storage, out of the way. They all, I can still pull them, so it might be okay to get it.
Any further comments from the council? Any comments from the public?
Um, this never came before the Park Board. We were never asked if the Park Board thought there needed Father Revalley Park, but those benches, there's two, I think, and they rove all over the park, because people move them to the shade when they're playing with their kids, or they move them to the other end where they're playing, playing football. I think it's horrible that you would get, get rid of some and not, number one, give the Park Board an opportunity to figure out if there's other places, and, um, there's use, I mean, the ones that are Father Revalley Park are used all the time in the summer, but they're also used, like now, during playing football, and they'll be used in T-ball season. I just, I just think that you shouldn't give them away.
I have a question for Vicky. The benches you're talking about at Father Revalley Park, are they, these plastic ones or are they metal or what?
No, they're the, they're the plastic, they're the same thing.
Same ones.
Yeah.
So in a way, you just kind of hit my point, they move everywhere. Yeah, you're right, if they're in the river, they're going to be in, they're going to ...
But, but the ones at Father Revalley Park don't leave the park, they just move to the shade, or they move to where they're watching T-ball, or, or, you know, the games. So, I mean, yeah, they're movable, and they do move, but it's for the people to use, and they haven't left Father Revalley Park. They're used down there, but there's definitely, I mean, you could use more, you know.
Any further comments from the public? And from the council? Go ahead.
I, I think that, you know, we should give our Park Board a chance to look at the inventory, what we have, where they might be used, um, and, and, yeah, they might use five or six, and maybe donate the rest, but give, give them a chance to look at their plan and see what they want to do with it.
All right, so, councilmember Smith?
I'd like to move that we table this until the Park Board has an opportunity to check this out.
Okay. Can I make a motion on that, sir?
I did.
Okay, you have a motion? We have a motion to table the issue, bring it before the Park Board further. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Sean N'Gnella, would you please take the vote?
Yes, Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor, Sean, Councilor Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilor Barker?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you. All right, board reports. Councilmember Brown?
I, as Councilmember Smith said, I did send in for, um, for the airport board, I feel it is very, that we do need to make sure that we have our representative at the boards that we are on. Just a couple of things, at the airport board, um, I did remind the board that they need to appoint someone new to take the minutes, because Mr. Brian Germain was the secretary, so they do need to find a, someone to start doing that, instead of making the airport manager keep the minutes. Something that I, I felt, that I learned was, there is no funding for their current fuel tank up there, and that's why they're working so hard with different options, because at the age, it's 30 years old, it has seen its life expectancy. Part of the big reason why they needed the contract with Morrison and Marley is, they really need to get those runways and taxiways up there at the airport paved, so they can keep their funding and get more grants, and they're going to start working on trying to work in something for a fuel tank also out there, so, um, there was only one bid, and we probably got it for the good company for... That's it, airport?
All right, if you, Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, we, uh, we kind of went through most of it, we went through that Hillbilly fencing, the free bike rack, the last appears already aware of that, so it's not a reminder or anything to give you. We have repairs and maintenance needed around the basketball courts and the skate area. The basketball courts, I, from what I was getting, the, the hoops could use new netting, when they were...
This is Father Revalley?
Or, I'm believing this is Lewis and Clark, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. They were, a handful of younger folks were requesting that the hoops netting be replaced with chains, so that they don't get so easily weathered. Also, cracks in the cement around the skate park area have been, well, close to causing injury, they've been getting a little excessive, so that's something to be looked into. Possible add-ons to the skate park area have been requested as well. These young women were very helpful and invested in it, I mean, they came in and sat with us and spoke to us, showed us what they were, what they were wanting. They also put forward ideas to build revenue for these repairs. That was something else that we brought to fruition in the Park Board, that possible, with council's approval, to have certain sponsorships possibly on out there, and to have, uh, to have possible small concerts when available on the property. There were other options as well, but I don't know if public property would permit, but, I don't know, brewery standoffs, we were talking, uh, cornel throwing and such like this, just to build revenue, even skate shows maybe, so the kids can show off their prowess at the skate park, to build revenue for their add-ons and for the repairs, just to kind of bolster the Park Board's intake for, for repairs and upkeep. And, I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the executive report. We can all...
Councilmember comments?
Councilman, excuse me. I told you I was missed, wasn't I? Councilmember Brown?
I, I just want to remind people, when you're replying to emails, please think about it before you hit reply all, because, once again, that is a violation. If you hit reply all on something that Janelle has sent from Town Hall, that is a violation in the open public meeting law, so we need to be very wise when we hit reply, either hit reply. If you need something to go to all the council members, the best way to do it is go back to Janelle directly, and she can then, in her position, send it out to all council members.
She breaks the chain.
Yeah. That was the only council comment, for me, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other council comments? Councilmember Barker?
Um, I know they're not here tonight, but I just wanted to thank the Scarecrow Festival, um, I believe there was 70 some scarecrows that they had registered this year, just from observation, the town was full Friday night and Saturday, even with the windstorm that came through Friday night, people were still out there. I mean, it was, it was on the wing, watching everybody come into town. The streets, I was going up home, and I noticed that there was probably two blocks full of cars that were parked along the streets, I think it was probably more than what Creamery Paying Camp honestly, in just a short amount of time, it was just, it was nice to see the town full, and it sounds like everybody had a good time, a lot of creativity out there, so, thank those guys again for putting it on, thanks for the Public Works Department for helping out, putting those stages up where they needed to be put up to silence the, the councils and so forth, making the event again another sacred event.
Thank you, Councilmember Barker, good report. Any other council comments? Now we move on to the executive report. As you guys know, I went to an MIA conference last week, it's the first fall one I've ever went to, as Stacy and Cindy might say, we've always been to the spring one, and it was very informative, but it was mainly for vendors, vendors across the state trying to sell their wares to cities and towns, whether it was insurance, or cemetery, digitizing, there were a lot of good information about Airbnb's that I got, we're not the only town that has Airbnb's without regulations, a lot of towns do, and so, a lot, you know, when they come in and they start an Airbnb, there's no regulations at all to say what you can and cannot do. We don't have it, Hamilton doesn't have it, a lot of towns don't have it, so, we've got a lot of good information, we're putting that together, we'll have to get back and forth with them, but hopefully sometime this winter, hopefully, we can bring up coordinates together that'll give us some regulations as far as Airbnb's. Grants for infrastructure and wastewater projects, I've got a lot of good information there, I gave that to Gina. There was also helpful information on mapping our cemeteries, we are looking into, to see if it's feasible to put our records online and digitize, and actually, Andrina, Janelle, Steve, yesterday, have already started that process, because if we were ever to lose, as Vicki knows, and Jeff, if we ever lose those cemetery scrolls in there, we'd be so screwed, so bad, it's like this, it's been going on for years, but the thing is, Town Hall ever fired, started on fire, the first thing you grab is those damn cemetery records. It's happened, it could happen, and we're not alone, a lot of other towns are starting to do it too, because they have a lot of old records, and a good example is, I was watching yesterday, Steve had to dig a grave, and he was going back and forth, out there coming in, make sure that he had the right spot, because the spot that's on the map and the spot that's up there, a couple holes or whatever are off us, so it was a mess, so. Andrina's already...
So Andrina's already started on that, and bless her heart, and with Janelle's help, Gina's and Steve's, I think Janelle said it gets right down to where Andrina and her will have to go out to the site itself and start documenting things, bringing it back, putting an end to a spreadsheet. And then, I think Andrina said, there's a program out there for $500 or something a year.
Yeah, we're looking into a little different ones to see if that's something that you can do.
There was one that I brought back, it was pretty expensive.
For a year?
It did a lot.
Oh, yes. But I mean, one block would pay for that. So anyway, that's what we're starting to do there. Uh, I spoke with Lenora Rockshad of Royal Water, they have a real vendor there, and she is willing to come, coming up in November and start the process of getting our Public Works employees certified in water and wastewater certifications. In fact, we have one employee now, Cody Anderson, who is taking his tests as we speak in Bozeman. And we have another kid that we just hired, he does no certifications, but him and Steve and Jeff and Matt are all willing to sit upstairs in November and have Lenora start going through and then they get credits and classes instead of us going somewhere and spending a bunch of money. Since we have so many here that want to do it, she wanted to come here and take your time to do it, which I think is great. So that's coming down the pipe. Fall cleanup continues, Public Works, we are two men down, as you know. Glenn just retired recently, so all we have is Steve, Jeff and Matt. So please be patient, people, with everybody. They're trying to do the best they can to get the leads and everything picked up. And like Steve said earlier, the debris is there, we'll get to it when we can because it's just, there's a lot there. Gina and I had a meeting with HDR, Eli Malloy, yesterday regarding the use of the remaining RFP money for meter and meter pits on Pine Street. MRI construction, for whatever reason, they don't want to come back and put in the meter and meter pits on Pine. So, um, Eli is crunching the numbers and he's going to come back and we're going to put an RFP out, it takes a special meeting to come forward and to get a company to come and finish that and do the meter pits and do the meters on Pine Street. It says here 47, but Andina...
Thirty seven.
Yeah, Andina corrected.
Yeah.
Corrected us yesterday, it is 37 meter pits and these are all along Pine, which is a big deal. That would really help us out. So we have the money here to do it. So we'll get doing that. Um, and Gina, I think you asked, what's her name, for an extension on this, correct? Into 25?
Yeah, Lindsay. Well, I haven't asked yet, but yes, we've been talking to her about it and she said, yes, if the project goes further than December, then we will ask for an extension. That'll take us into December at 2025.
Correct.
So, yes.
And I want to read a letter, there's another thing for MRI. Um, Eli, they don't even want to come back and do the touch-up work on Mission. It's a bullet point, so Steve and I know they have to touch up, they don't want to do it. So, uh, Mr. Eli Malloy, the project manager of HDR, sent Kit Shumway of MRI Contracting a letter yesterday, I'll read it. Dear Mr. Shumway, this letter shall serve as an official notice at the contract time to reach final completion established in Article Four of the agreement ended on October 6, 2024. This deadline is based on 150-day contract time with an additional 38 days added by January order that commenced to run on the date the public notice proceeded was issued March 27, 2024. Please submit an updated construction schedule detailing your project date for final completion. Your honor has a right to seek liquidated damages under Section 405 of the agreement. So in other words, if they don't come back and do it, we should start finding them. If we're able to do so. There you go. And as far as MRI asphalt, they came back last week and they finished touching up Spring Street and the sinkhole off Charville on Second Street. There's a couple drainage issues that need to be addressed on Spring Street. And since we had a cost savings, Marty of SRS Asphalt met with Caleb and Claude Van Hassel over there on Spring and Peterson, right on the corner there, it's a low spot. And now that the Spring Street is new, it's got that curve in it, so all the water running down the side runs right down to that hole and is creating a big, a mess. So they're trying to alleviate that. And then the spot right down the street from that, right, Steve? That needs to be addressed. And since we have a cost savings, we'll be able to cover that. So it's still within the place of work, so we'll get that going. Uh, we held a water rights meeting today with Ross Miller, Jared Bean, Janelle, Steve Freeman, Cindy Brown and I, and a couple of plans are in the works. Plan A is to pursue a application for a different flow rates on the Creamery wells. I know this is complicated, I don't quite understand myself. And Plan B is to wait, there was a law that basically, um, had to do with the depletion reaches of the well fields as far as, I know, as far as the water rights out there. And some said it, so in other words, we can't use that. And so we can't do Plan A, we're probably going to have to wait for Plan B. And since we have broken the legislature now, I've already notified them about that today, see if we can't bring that back up and get it passed. So that's what's going on with the water rights. And with that, that is my executive report. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second, please.
The second by councilmember Maugh. On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Steve? I'm just, I'm just going to...